This time I'd like to call our meeting to order. Stand and play the leadings, go for it.
I play the leadings.
Play the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda, I'll do the motion in a second.
I will make a motion to adopt an act of agenda. Second.
Any changes or additions today? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of August four, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I wanted to make a correction on that part when I last asked about the luminaires. Uh, we're not gonna do them when they do the love lights. Um, I know it was suggested, but we wanted the, the, uh, get historical society to do it on Christmas Eve. So that's the change. That's all I would like to know.
Angela sent that out earlier to everyone, so that will be corrected.
Okay, I would need a motion in a second to approve.
Wait, here's.
Another one.
The, the presentation that Mr. Woods did, did we not suggest, um, a meeting place? I don't see that in the minutes.
You're telling me you did a question.
That's what I thought, and I don't see that in the minutes.
I can hand that, it was so back and forth with all the different locations mentioned. I didn't know if we had set that in stone, so I did not include it, but I certainly can.
That's what he said, it was the.
Yeah. So don't get back to what I said then?
It's, yes, yes.
So I do have clarification, are we going to charge them our standard fee?
I'd say no.
No.
Would we need a motion for that? Yes. Do that on your, let's do it feather and handle it in your, Commissioner's comments and updates, we can do that then.
I make a motion to approve minutes with the corrections.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion just here. Public comment. Citizens may speak on items not listed on the printed agenda. Please state your name and address and observe the three-minute time limit. Do we have anyone signed up? Moving on along. Public hearing, consideration proposed two alleyways. Partial number zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero zero one seven. And number zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero zero seventeen A. This is petition by Michael McCaffey-Bon at three oh six Byron Street. And Angela, could you address the board on that?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, we have received a request from, uh, Michael McCaffey-Bon to have two alleyways closed that join their property. One that runs east to west and one that runs north to south. That divides their property, um, between several parcels. Um, they're asking to have both alleyways closed. There is no, um, easements or railways that we have to contend with in this area. Commissioner McCaffey-Bon not able to be here tonight. She reached out to us earlier today due to a health concern, so. But there, we have not had any, um, anyone opposing. A lot of people asked what the reasoning was for, but no one opposed.
Thank you. I would need a motion in a second to open the public hearing at this time.
I make a motion, will you open the public hearing?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like to open the public hearing at this time, citizens may come forward and speak for or against the, uh, issue here at this time.
Angela, that's closing the entire way on both of them, right?
Yes.
And except for the property owners that filed proper papers to get their helpful alley, alley.
I believe that we have filed with the other closures that we've done, is that correct?
So when we file the ordinance, the tax department, you actually reached out to me because there's a new person over there. The tax department is by statute supposed to split it based on our ordinance and give one half of the entrance to the people on this side and one half to the people on this side. There's a new person in the tax department that reached out to me, I guess about two weeks ago, saying, I don't know what to do about this. So we instructed them and directed them to their county attorney to follow up with it to make sure. But in the past, they've done it simply based on the ordinance and the statute. So I will follow up and make sure that is what they want to do.
There's always been a little bit of.
That's what they're supposed to do. Yeah, when the ordinance is recorded, a copy of it is supposed to be sent to the tax department and they're supposed to split it on the GIs.
That's the easiest way, but I remember one time we had to get a quick claim deed, you got your half and you didn't get your half, did you? She don't think she got her ass.
I'm not gonna look into that, because that's not correct.
Yeah, because they can't take it, right.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Not, I would need a motion, say aye, to close the public.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This time I'd like to close the public hearing. Take action on that tonight, this for, so.
I would make a motion that we close the two alleyways. Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Adopt ordinance zero twenty-five twenty-six, version zero one. Ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Denton to permanently close two alleyways. Partial zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero zero seventeen. And zero seven oh five three zero 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 three, excuse me, nine zero 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 sixteen. Zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero 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 five. Zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero 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 nine. And zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero zero one. East list, highway one oh nine and Byron Street. And north to south between parcels. Zero seven oh five three zero 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 nine zero 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 nine. Zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero zero one-two. Zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine. Zero zero seventeen and. Zero seven zero five three zero 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 nine zero zero seventeen A.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is just the actual adoption of your ordinance. So you've had your public hearing, you've gone through the process of having these alleyways closed. But this is what we actually have to file for them to actually close those alleyways. So you just need to have those approved.
Those same alleyways.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to close those alleyways.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review proposed contract of water tank maintenance with seven progress. Noah Calhoun.
To command you to do as a lot of zeros. Good job on there.
I apologize, Noah, I didn't talk about who is computer.
I can still plug my little.
Probably by the time you get here, it'll play.
I don't have one of those connections.
I got you.
Yep, that one right there. How are y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Good. We kicked off momentarily, trust me.
She said she kicked off.
I did.
Clarification, thank you.
Can I get sort of what's loading in there? She introduced me, but my name is Noah Calhoun and I'm with Southern Corrosion. We do make this on, uh, water storage tanks, elevated tanks, ground storage tanks, steel, concrete, um. Is it gonna move it? We did evaluations on the town's water tanks in July, so that's what we're gonna be discussing. I'm gonna show you photos from, um, our inspections, our findings, and our recommendations moving forward. Maybe. It wants to do it. We might have known. Alright. Alright, so like I said, I'm Noah Calhoun, um, one of the representatives in North Carolina. We operate thirteen states and there's two representatives in North Carolina. But I'm with Southern Corrosion, like I said, we do water tank maintenance. So, for the agenda tonight, um, first and foremost, I want to set some ground rules. I've, I've been through these ground rules with Ms. Jenkins and Michael, uh, but I, I'm not your typical sales rep. My main objective is not to convince you to buy from me or to make a sale, it's to, uh, show you the facts. Get, get to know y'all, y'all, for, you know, for y'all to get to know me. And to equip you with every means necessary to make sound decisions about your water system and water tanks moving forward, okay? We're gonna talk about, a little bit about Southern Corrosion, who we are, and some testimonials. We're gonna go through the tank evaluations, future tank maintenance and asset management, what that looks like for Denton. And then there'll be a question, uh, section at the end. I'm not sure if this is gonna play actually. I'm Jim Skilton, and I'm president of Southern Corrosion. And I've been painting water towers since I was fifteen years old. We do all styles of water towers, winged tanks, living columns, silver tanks, ground storage tanks, concrete tanks. We do, while we look for our customers, we do any type of repairs if they need done. We wash out tanks, we inspect tanks, we install mixers. The customers basically tell us that we are very responsive to their needs, that we have excellent customer service. And are more flexible when their needs are new skinned. We can have the security that that's just one area that they really don't have to worry about. So many of our customers don't have the personnel, they can even climb a water tower much less, know what to look for and what's wrong. And so, we provide that function for our customers. That was a little bit grainy, but that was Jim Skilton, our president. Um, his father started Southern Corrosion, Harry Skilton, uh, in nineteen eighty-three in Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina. We've been family owned and operated since the very beginning and there are no plans to change that. There's generations of Skiltons within the company that are teed up for success, for ownership. Like I said, we were founded in nineteen eighty-three. We're founded on Christian-based values. So I can't speak for everyone within the company walls, obviously, but I can speak for myself. Um, there, there's a team at Southern Corrosion that we just wanna do the right thing no matter what. This will be, if this one plays.
I'm Lisa Smith-Berai, I'm the general manager and executive director of West Federal Water Corporation. Our customers rely on us for great water supply. We service a population of about nineteen thousand five hundred. Because we live on the coast, our tanks require a lot of care. We have three water towers, we have one seven hundred fifty thousand gallon hydro pillar. We have a six hundred thousand gallon leg tank, and we have a seven hundred fifty thousand gallon spillway. Southern Corrosion, they are the people that keep us looking good. They take care of our tanks, and they have for many, many years, actually since nineteen ninety-eight. They've been on our side for such a long time because we've developed such a great relationship with them. I think for us, what sets Southern Corrosion apart is that they say they're a family organization, and I'm just saying it, they actually prove it. I don't have to worry about our elevated tanks. If something goes up, a light goes out, we can finally call them, they keep it looking for state, not only on the outside, but on the inside, which is most important. Southern Corrosion does external maintenance first, internal maintenance, inspection, repair. We will definitely say that we have saved money over the years by maintaining our tanks and keeping them for state, we have afforded major repairs. We love Southern Corrosion, we recommend them across the state.
She said one thing that I wanna note, uh, we focus on family, we focus on relationships. Because we've learned that in this industry, it really cannot be a transactional thing. So we try to focus heavily on the relationship piece of this. You have to trust who you, you do business with, especially when it comes to something like a water tower. Where you guys aren't climbing them every day to make sure that we're doing what we need to. So that trust is very important to us. This is just a few references, uh, in this area. And, you know, if y'all wanna take a picture of this or I can send it to you, I encourage you to call on these people. They're not paid by us to, to say good things about us, um. So now we're gonna walk through the evaluations of y'all's water tanks, they've been on, uh, July eighth. First is the Daniel Street tank. It's a five hundred thousand gallon Toro Ellipsoidal, or a Taurus bottom water tower. It was built by Phoenix, Phoenix in two thousand and five. The high water level is eighty-three feet and the low water level is fifty-three feet. So the bottom of the bowl is at fifty-three feet, uh, the head range is thirty feet. That's a picture of the data plate. I'm sure y'all seen this tank many, many times. So you can see general mildew growth on the legs, on the bowl, on the struts. You can also see, the coatings look chalky, they're not very shiny. So when you rub your hand across it, the paint or the coatings are gonna come off on your hand. That's just a sign that the coating is starting to deteriorate. It's degrading naturally like we would expect, right? Here's a picture of the ladder. Picture of the bowl. This is on the catwalk area, where you walk around the perimeter of the tank. These are areas of undercutting, it's coating failure, but I don't believe this tank has been painted in twenty years since it was built. So, it's, this is really not concerning to me. This is, like I said, just proof that it is deteriorating at a rate that we would expect. Here's another area of it. This is a picture of the shell wall. This was taken from the very roof of the tank, and you can see those stripe marks. Over time, the sun, the elements, they beat down on the coating system, right? This is just another indicator that the coating is starting to deteriorate, right? You can see the undercoat, the underlying coatings. There's not a whole lot of corrosion, so the tank is in really good shape. But, the cyclical maintenance, like we're talking about, go ahead and repainting this while it's in this condition and not waiting another ten or fifteen years, um, can save you a lot of money. This is a picture of the vent. There's screening in between. If you take this off and flip it over, there's screening on the inside, fine mesh, which is in good condition. And this is the interior. The corrosion that we see in this area on this dollar plate, this is normal, this is what we would expect, right? This is a twenty-year-old, twenty-year-old coating system. Between fifteen and twenty years is what we expect these to last. So this is all what we expect to see. This rust bleeding over here is, um, the crevices on the weld seams, it cannot be coated, that back-to-back steel. Some of the panels are not welded, especially on this dollar plate area. So that rust bleed is just an indicator that it's, it's corroding in those areas. You can see on this section, this is quite a bit of rust, rust, uh, pinpoint rusting or flashing, as we call it. This is also an indicator that the coatings are starting or have deteriorated, right? They're thinning. So the steel profile is popping through the paint. This is another photo of the other side. This is a picture of the tank interior, once it was drained, before we cleaned it. I should say after we cleaned it. Uh, this is before, and this was after. So this is after we got all the sediment out, uh, sterilized it for service. I wanna put this picture here, because this is a pit. So, what forms on the inside of tanks sometimes are what's called tubercles. So they're basically a cell of active corrosion. We knock it off with a pressure washer, but that tubercle drills, basically. It eats the steel away, it eats the coatings first, and then it begins to eat the steel, which is what you see here. This was less than a sixteenth of an inch deep, so it was not, not a very big deal. Um, but now, this steel is, is uncovered, right? So when you take these tubercles off, and you don't have cyclical maintenance, blasting and painting of the tank interior on a cycle, um, these things do happen. So, I wanted, there was only one or two of them that we found on the inside, which is awesome. But I wanted to show this to you, um, because that's what is uncovered from those rust barnacles, is what we, we like to call them. This is a picture of the cable safety on the interior ladder. What you see here is what we call these tubercles, they're growths. So it grew on this cable safety and it broke the cable in half. So that leads into some of the recommendations, right? An interior and exterior renovation is what we recommend now. Um, catching it before it gets too, too bad. Uh, like I said, the exterior is in good shape, there's not a whole lot of corrosion that we noted. But, you can see that the paint is thinning, it's chalking, and you've gotten your money's worth out of that coating system. The interior, same way, um, it's really not in terrible, terrible shape. But, it has been twenty years since that coating has been there, and it's, it's served its, its life. Replace the exterior, um, the, the existing cable style fall prevention system on the interior ladder, like you saw it was broke. Remove that and replace it, and install a climb prevention device on the exterior ladder. Which is essentially eight-foot aluminum section that covers the ladder with a lock. So, nay do-gooders can, uh, you know, they, they won't be able to, to climb now. Because that ladder is not protected currently, other than being cut off about ten feet from the ground. And by the way, if y'all have questions, please, please hit me with them. I'm never the smartest man in the room, so if I cannot answer your questions, I'll, I promise I'll find somebody who can. The Cox Avenue tank. It's approximately a hundred thousand gallons, based on our calculations, me and Michael were talking about that. It might be a little bit more, uh, but based on our calculations, it's around a hundred thousand gallons. It was built by Chicago Bridge and Iron in nineteen thirty-nine. The high water level is approximately ninety feet, and the low water level is approximately sixty-seven feet. I say approximately because that data plate does not hold that information and I had to count. And, I consider myself smart, but I do lose count sometimes. So it's approximately ninety feet, uh, high water level and sixty-seven feet low water level. Y'all have also seen this tank, I'm sure, plenty. Picture of the foundation, the base plates. Picture one of the legs and the riser. This tank, I believe, was recoded in twenty eighteen, so it's been seven years or so. Picture of the bowl. And these were not active leaks, there was no water coming out of here, but this does, this is an indicator that, you know, once upon a time, it was leaking. This is a picture of your overflow pipe. So there's a picture and a little bit of the interior side of that. But that's connected to the, the tank interior. Once it reaches a certain level, it'll spill out of that, um, that pipe there. This is looking at the roof. This tank is equipped with, uh, a roll-around ladder, so that ladder revolves around that tank roof. That's called a fennel ball style vent. This is a picture of the manway. As, as you can see right here, um, the interior side of this hatch was originally coated with this aluminum-style paint that's on the exterior. But, the interior has a grease or a wax coating system, okay? So, this is a few pictures, you can see me down there, that's me. Um, this is what the interior of this tank looks like. With these grease systems, uh, they're, they are outdated. But, generally, when it comes to a renovation process of this type, the roof area is left uncoated. Because it never has contact with the water, right? So, this, what you see is mill scale, from the milling process of steel. That is still adhered, you can see corrosion happening on various areas. So this wax only protects what touches the water, which is generally the shell wall, the shell wall area and lower. Um, as you fill in these tanks draw, that grease or wax will begin to settle at the bottom. So there, there's not a whole lot of this grease system still left, even after seven years of renovation. Because, it's how it's designed, it begins to sag and it will collect at the bottom. That's the float system. This is tied to the float indicator on the outside, as you can see, it's not in the water, so it's hung up currently. There's another picture of that float. A lot of this, some of it's sediment, some of it's also not, like I said, that grease, that wax coating, that is now resting in the bottom. I thought I did have a picture of the interior, um, overflow, but I did not, apparently I was wrong. So, for this tank, uh, an interior renovation is recommended right now. Uh, a renovation that will take all of that grease, wax coating out of the tank. Do the proper surface preparation and apply an epoxy coating, which you can expect around fifteen years out of, like the Daniel Street tank. Uh, like I said, these, the coatings are grandfathered, uh, in a sense, but they're not NSF-approved for contact with potable water. Um, so we do recommend removing all of that and putting an epoxy-based system in the tank. Installing cable, uh, style fall prevention systems on the roof and interior ladders. The main exterior ladder was equipped with one, but the roof and the interior ladder did not have one. Same as the Daniel Street tank, install a climb prevention device on the outside main ladder. Install screenings on the overflow discharge and the roof vent. And repair the liquid level indicator so it's reading accurately, so you can actively tell how much water is in the tank. Y'all have any questions about any of those recommendations there?
Does some of that stuff affect the quality of water in?
That depends. And I'm really not equipped to answer that question, um, because we don't handle water testing and things like that. Uh, but it, it, it definitely can. It's like a coating system that has been long overdue can also affect the quality of the water as well. It, it can, it has potential to, uh, but I'm not really at liberty to, you know, answer. So future tank maintenance and asset management, so I met with Ms. Jenkins and Michael about this, um, management plan, this maintenance program. And what it does essentially is it takes your two tanks, um, put a cycle of work associated with the tanks. Sort of painting, washouts, inspections, uh, and it helps spread that cost out over time. So, in an ETC, uh, program, you have full asset management, interior and exterior renovations are guaranteed. interior washouts, emergency compliance and routine repairs. If somebody rides by and sees that there's water spraying out of a tank because there's a leak, you call us, we show up, we weld it up, coat the area to make sure that it's protected. It's a part of the program. You don't incur any extra charges because of that. That's a part of the emergency services. Sailor consultation and assistance. Uh, your tanks don't have sailor equipment on them now, but if that was ever to happen, we would get involved to make sure that it remains, first and foremost, a water tower, it doesn't turn into a cell tower. And just to make sure that when these things happen, like antenna changeouts, uh, putting a corral on top of the tank, we make sure that it's done the right way, uh, to protect y'all. And we have professional engineers and NACE certified inspectors on staff. So for denting, we recommend annual inspections, five-year washouts, ten-year exterior renovations on both tanks, and fifteen-year interior renovations, which include blasting and painting with, with epoxy. And then, like I said earlier, all future repairs that need to be dealt with. This is a little snapshot on Excel of what that would look like, starting in year one, twenty twenty-five, an exterior and interior of Daniel Street, and the interior of the Cox Avenue tank. And then for the next thirty-one years, this is your plan of maintenance. So for what we've discussed, to put these tanks in a program, we can do for fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars annually. Now that is a budget number slightly inflated for budget purposes. And it's going to be CPI-adjusted annually after that, right? Uh, the CPI, we've seen it go down. It's directly tied to all of our contracts. If the CPI is in the negatives, your premium goes down. It's probably rare that that happens, but I do feel like I need to note that, because it has happened before. The contract automatically renews annually unless canceled within sixty days of that renewal date. So it is technically a one-year renewal agreement. Uh, we have to earn your business each and every year, and we want to do that by doing good work for you, right? Any questions on this piece here?
If it's one-year renewal, why does it say we have to pay when we cancel it?
Because the premium, that's a great question. The premium is lower than the amount of work that we would be doing in the first couple of years. So the cancellations is really not to scare you, I love this question. The cancellations is not to scare you. We don't even make money on cancellations. It's just to make sure that we don't walk away upside down from this program, right? Um, it allows you to have a structured cost associated with this, these kinds of repairs over time. And like I said, it allows us to continue earning your business, but we don't hang those over your head that are not canceled, you know? It's just so we don't walk away upside down from doing a lot of work, and in year two, the cancel, we don't want to do this anymore. Great question. What question do you got? Sir?
What happens if you go out of business?
That's a great question. What happens if the town goes out of business?
When hell would shake?
It's a great question. I've never been asked that question. I do believe as long as there's water towers that need maintenance, we will be in business. And that's my honest answer.
What's the ownership structure like at the company?
The ownership, Jim Skilton is the owner, um, and president. It is, he, it is co-owned with Albert Basolas. And they have a copy of the packet, too, right? So there's a little introduction about Jim and Albert in that packet. So Harry Skilton, Jim's father, and Albert's father started Southern Corrosion. So they are now co-owners. And like I said, Jim is very involved, boots on the ground, he's in the office every single day. So that's kind of how it's, it's structured, it's Albert and Jim, both of them sole owners.
We like small businesses, but succession plans are important in small businesses.
It is to us as well. It is. Jim's wife works for Southern Corrosion, Jim's daughter works for Southern Corrosion, her husband works for Southern Corrosion, they have a daughter. So there's, like I said, generations of Skiltons that are lined up for success in this industry.
Curious, too, the work that you've already outlined, that, I mean, what, what is the cost of that?
So I should have put that in here. You know what? See, now, she, she told me to put that in here, and I was, I neglected to. So for an interior and exterior renovation of the Daniel Street tank, which is a five-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated tank, I actually might reference my notes on this one. I believe it's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do both. Let me check real quick. Actually.
I did.
About a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred. Um, it's not on here, it's in my notes section of the PowerPoint, so I did do it. And for the Cox Avenue tank, an interior and exterior renovation would run about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Seems backwards.
Seems backwards. So the reason being-
It's a smaller tank.
It is a smaller tank. The reason being, the amount of surface prep that is involved in removing a grease-waxed system, uh, is pretty in-depth. So to ensure, uh, coating adhesion to the steel, you have to remove all of the grease and foreign matter from that steel before you can surface prep, right? So it is very labor and time-intensive. That's, I, I get you're, you're exactly right, it does seem backwards. But the reason being is, uh, the Daniel Street tank is already equipped with that epoxy system, so blasting, the blasting process is not as harsh as trying to remove the foreign matter that's in the Cox Avenue tank currently. And that's why that difference is.
So the Cox Avenue, um, would not be replaced with that wax, it would be-
No, ma'am, we, we would not, yes, ma'am, we would remove that wax completely, prepare the surface to receive new coatings, and apply, um, a two-part epoxy system, which is generally about a two-and-a-half coat system.
The Cox Avenue tank, the coating inside, has it been there since nineteen thirty-nine, or has it been replaced?
I believe, I believe it was replaced last in twenty eighteen, when the exterior was renovated. I do believe it was removed from service, and it was, that, the way that process works is you have to scrape with scrapers and tools to remove all existing wax and then reapply. So that, when you're comparing the two, removing the grease, reapplying the grease versus removing the grease, hot water washing, or putting some kind of degreaser to remove the grease from the steel, because if you blast the grease into the steel, the coatings are not going to stick to it. So you've got to completely remove it, abrasive blast it, and then recode. So the, like I said, it is a little bit more labor-intensive.
So that, that cost that you've given us, is that the ladders and all of that you quoted, or is it-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's the whole?
Yep.
And also ask you, if we pared Cox down and build another tank like Daniel Street's place, how that transferred over to the old year ago?
So we, we've had contracts in place for a long time, and yes, tanks get built and tore down quite a bit. So in the event that you've invested money in the Cox Avenue tank, right? You decide that it's, it's not, we're not being best served by that tank, we need to replace it. We can calculate the amount of money spent toward that tank and apply it toward this new tank in the program. So it's not like we're going to collect the money and, well, it's going to be an extra charge for that. It will be, but we'll calculate it meticulously to make sure that the money you've spent already is applied to good use. It's not, you know, um, if that ever came, I don't know, there was conversations about that in the future, but we don't really know what that, what that looks like yet. Any other questions?
Time frame, I mean, like, timeframe, lifespan on the Cox Avenue tank?
That's a tough question. We have a tank-
We were going to say that service twenty years ago.
We, uh, we have a tank under a program currently that was built in nineteen oh four. So the tank will last forever if you take care of it. And that's my, that's my, yes, I'm in the tank industry, but that is my honest answer.
Yeah, you didn't see anything that was really earth-shattering?
No, sir.
It looked like that tank actually looked better than the other one, the Cox tank.
You're right. The reason being, the other tank was white, you can see all of its deficiencies. I can show you a tank if you'd like, uh, I looked at last week, that I'm recommending they tear down, and it's not that one.
It'll have a different look, too, because it had the wax coating and the epoxy.
Exactly, exactly. So that, um, what you're seeing is bare steel, essentially, here. Whereas in the other tank, you're seeing the steel profile coming through. There's a little bit of pinpoint corrosion that stripped. It's the steel profile coming through the existing coatings. This tank lacks those coatings, so you're seeing bare steel.
Have you heard any estimates on what it costs to build a tank there?
That depends. We're not in the construction industry as far as building tanks, but rule of thumb is between six and eight gallons. Eight, six and eight dollars per gallon. So a five-hundred-thousand-gallon tank could be two to three million dollars. That's the rule of thumb we go by, but now that might not be exactly accurate, about what you could find, but that's what we see.
L.A. tank?
L.A. tank. I believe it's between four and five dollars a gallon for a ground storage tank.
Suppose we wanted to do one tank right now?
Correct.
Another later, which one needs it the most?
That's a really good question. And if only one of them needed work right this second, I would be at liberty to answer. The Daniel Street tank is newer, it's twenty years old. It does, like I've said, need an interior and an exterior renovation. This one is almost a hundred years old and needs an interior renovation. Um, you'd also have to consider the fact that it's been this way for almost a hundred years. So I will let you make that decision. I believe there's more work to be done as far as painting inside and out of the Daniel Street tank. But since both of them need work, I will let you make that decision. Which one is more important to you?
The big one, torch. Yes and no, Cox is probably our-
Pressure.
We build and discharge Cox. No telling how many times a day, because it's not but a hundred thousand gallons. And we're feeding a million-five to Handy.
Daily.
Hundred thousand gallon tank. So there's a lot of water downstream, that little big tank right there.
So what would the renovation process look like on this tank? Could it be offline for-
Yeah, because we done it before.
Okay.
I mean, we just bypass our tank and send it straight to our, our Handy's tank and down the line. But the only thing about that one is it don't give us any, uh, detention time to hold water in the system. When the work line shuts down, that one's done pretty quick, with just a hundred thousand gallons.
I meant to ask you that in the other wing, by the way. What do you guys care about most when it comes to the water tanks, the water systems? Is there anything I have not touched on that, that, that you care about?
I think about the quality of water when I sell that to our customers, that's one thing. And then also the, uh, the way it looks on Daniel Street, it looks like it does need some, uh, some tender love and care on that one, just to be, uh, to help preserve it longer, it looks like it needs some.
Like I said, this is not in terrible shape. So I show you the bath, right? Overall, the coatings are well-adhered, and it is in good condition for its age, right? So I don't show you these pictures to scare you, you can see even after the washout, the lower, most of the times, uh, the coatings that stay under the water level are in better condition anyways. They're not dealing with the elements, off gases, things of that nature. The area, the coatings that deal with those elements, off gases, as the tank rises and lowers, um, all that stuff collects near the vent stack. So the areas above the water level will, you'll see it most. But you're exactly right, a little bit of tender loving care could definitely extend the life of both of them. Any other questions? Y'all making it easy on me, I don't like that.
If we chose one, if we, if we just chose to do one right now, what would that do to our pricing structure?
We would have to reprice it, definitely. I believe we have priced out an option for just the Daniel Street tank. Uh, I don't have those numbers on me, we only discussed both of them together, but we would have to reprice it. We could definitely price it separately. It would just be a standalone, one tank maintenance contract, and then in coming years, add the other, just see how that looks. I believe, I believe, I will have to look, the Daniel Street tank as a standalone maintenance program, just on that tank, would be about twenty-nine thousand dollars, I think. But I will have to check on that, and I can make sure you have that information.
Jim, we got any other questions?
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, this is a very interesting presentation.
Are there any questions, Noah, that we haven't asked, that you're thinking, why Noah didn't ask that?
That's a great question. I don't believe so. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Moore, I did reach out to some of their references. Town of Liberty, um, stated that they are currently in contract, and started in two thousand eighteen, senior contract is the original framework that they've given us, and that they're satisfied with their services. Also that, um, they've had one emergency that was taken care of very quickly, and someone was on site soon after the call was put in. They would recommend using Southern Corrosion, and also they stated that the town, this was Liberty, Town of Liberty has three elevated tanks with a long-term maintenance contract. It is easy for us to keep up with and prepare for scheduled maintenance on each tank. For example, knowing when a tank is scheduled for an interior washout or an interior painting, you have an idea of the timeframe that you need to have a tank drained. Southern Corrosion is really good to work with around the Town of Liberty's maintenance schedule as needed. And then I had a call back from the Town of Norway, which was on the list as well. And the gentleman had been there four years, he said that they will repair in place with their services.
Review professional service contract agreement with the G F P Incorporated, formerly Trans Systems Corporation, and review the payment schedule. Chris Knowhoo?
Do you like us? Can you spell us up to down the road?
That's a really good question, Commissioner Morris, I spoke with him. Well, he was on vacation last week, I talked to him Friday before he left, and he assured me he'd be fresh and ready to go today. So we'll call him in the morning and find out what his, um, issue is that he's not here.
And we're about ready to want it in.
Right. So, um, I did give you guys a list of the roads that I know, um, I know there were several names we talked about. In looking at the list of roads that are still listed under what their recommendations were, and it is to do the, um, the AST coverage on the roads that are left in white on the chart that I gave you guys. In the diagram that I outlined, again, he was trying to get us feedback on the N C D O T. We might have luck with that, and I feel like it would be a recommendation to move forward with this requoting, with local payment companies, to see if we can get them to give us a quote for the AST, if that's still, um, what the board wants to go in that direction. Mr. Courier was supposed to be in town looking at the streets to make sure there wasn't any major effects from the winter weather that would have caused us to have to go in another direction on these AST, but he's not here. So, um, we will reach out in the morning and find out what we need to do.
I didn't see estimated cost, estimated cost, I figured he might-
Right, and that's what he was supposed to be bringing with him, is the estimated cost, which I told him what our budgeted figure was for this year, he was going to see what we could fit into that, whether, yeah. I felt sure we can do all those at our AST, that's the way that the board wants to still go. And last quote came in about- The last quote came in about about two dollars more than what you were expecting at these two dollars more for winter fees, so. I will give you guys that as much as I can.
Then we just do, where does it miss? Do your neighbors part of it?
We've done a lot of patching, but we haven't done any any real paving over there.
Greenbrier was half paved, starting at the upper end of having a rim. And then the first drive-in, that section hasn't, so it has a lot of patchwork that's been done. Their recommendation was to do the entire road with the A S T. And it may be that the other
I don't think you need to do it already.
Yeah, the upper end, I think, is still in a little bit of condition. So, maybe that we just, we could pave the other half so it matches the same type application, so that you don't have half A S T and half paving. But yeah, the first drive-in to about halfway where this mess went is about where it was stopped before. But that's been several years. It's not been since I've been here, I'll say, that the paving was
Yeah, what do you think about it? Fourteen years, yours?
Where do we go with this paving, Chris? Do we want to bring him in here?
Well, he was supposed to be here tonight, so.
I know. You told me a couple of times this month that he would be.
He's supposed to have been here tonight, and like I said, I'm not sure. I have not received a phone call or text. He has my sales, usually how we communicate, so.
Is he still doing like down here with the state bidding? Is he still trying to save us money?
He is. You know, we have a new district manager now for D O T, and he'll be at our meeting next month to kind of give us an update on our area and what projects have been completed. So, John Ryan took over.
Can he make that day?
Well, he should have made the day.
I mean, I'm talking about John.
Oh, yeah.
He reached out last time.
Need.
Last time, his mother had taken a file that morning, and he said he contacted his boss, but forgot everything else. So, he did apologize for that.
Sure. Maybe he was getting it's labor rights or something. I don't know, like when he looked down, I mean.
Might have been your last night.
Thought like he was here, but him looking out at it, he did have his thinking Monday.
I think he would have called and asked the way for her.
You would think, yeah.
How much money? Did you have time to figure?
I did not look. Mayor, you asked me that just a little while ago, and I don't remember what we budgeted. I believe it was two hundred sixty thousand, but let me give you that hard figure tomorrow morning.
Okay.
That's okay.
Well, it'll be in spring, probably.
I know. Well, this one hopefully be pushed up for fall, so they can still do it through October. Without having him here to give his guidance on that, I don't know. Well, I'll find out what he says in the morning. And if we need to seek someone else to help with this accomplishment, we can go back to.
Piedmont Tribe Regional Council, weatherization assistance program, Mayor Larry Ward. Last month's meeting, I didn't mention that I thought it was a really good program that Davidson County seemed to be on the short end of the stick. P T R C has three million, six hundred thousand dollars for weatherization. Now, in that report, it shows that it's all federal funded, but the state has some of that too. It's relatively simple for a person to apply for the grant. It's income-based, and it is for renters, but you got to fall under that amount of annual income.
I noticed you had to fill out a paper, you had to have your license, and check with your landlord, and you also had to give them a history of their utilities and do a lot of stuff. I guess they go through those things, right? To do all that.
He, as far as if you're a property owner and you renting a property out to someone, didn't cover that very well, so. I only got what I read on that part of it. But it's easy to apply for. It's a first-come, first-served basis. Once you're on the list, they go down the list until the money spends. Next appropriation, you move up. So, it covers things like a new roof, windows, appliances. It even covers if you rent an older home and a floor falls in, they'll fix it.
But you still got to fill out an application. Where is that information? Because I was, I looked on this and tried to look at the different websites. That's what I couldn't find what they actually do in terms of weatherization. So, where is that information as to what they do cover?
I got that from Matt Reese. I've been going into P T R C meetings for twelve years. Pretty positive with all that.
The first page that you guys were given is the page that Mayor Ward received from Matt Reese. And it basically is saying that they will help reduce your heating and cooling costs, and that they'll go through your home and look for energy efficiency measures. And out of that, and when you go into the application, there's a long list of items that they're going to check to see what you might qualify for. I didn't print the application because it's about ten pages, just the things that they're asking. But when they come out and do the home inspection, that's when they can assess to see what the needs are.
And then who does the work? Okay, it says you have to apply and mail paper applications to this address.
Yeah. I believe they try to use local contractors, but they have to be approved through this program.
And also, see, you got to, they got to have their property tax record card on their home and the county courthouse where the home is located. First month income, twelfth month utility, electric and gas, and photo I D.
I assume our only part in this is education and publicity, right? We don't have anything to do with it.
We don't.
We don't. It can be something that we push out on our website, our Facebook page, and then also in our newsletters, just to make the people aware that this program is out there. You know, as Mayor Ward said, a lot of other counties have received a lot of funding for this, but Davidson County has been very low on the list of people who've received the funding.
I think it's a good program. I think there's a lot of people here in Dillon that have single living off social security that would qualify.
Mayor, you think the P T R C would send somebody down here if we had a day for people to come to apply?
That's a good idea, Scotty. I'm sure Matt would come.
Yeah, whatever. Somebody that they could help with applications. If it's like Angel said, that's a lot of reasons people don't do it because it's too much trouble and it's some of them may not have the education or whatever.
We've still got some applications in there.
We do, and I would like to reach out to Matt Reese. And they would set up a day. I think that'd be a really great idea. Because a lot of it's done on the computer, and you know, not everybody's computer's happy either, so.
And this says it's fifteen pages. It says completed applications with original signatures must be returned via mail or in-person fax or email. Applications will not be accepted. So, filling out fifteen pages for an elderly or disabled is sometimes kind of tough, so.
Probably not going to happen.
Yeah, and it's important to note that renters are eligible too, as long as their landlords give them written permission. It's a big thing.
I'll, I'll reach out.
You're going to talk to Matt?
I will.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to get him down here. How do we get the word out?
We, we'll find out what you need a day, and then we'll just push it out. We can even, we got a contact for all our local churches, so we can push that out through the online as well. I'll know what the program is.
And we'll know Williams would be a good place to.
Yes.
Yeah, the Senior Services Center too. There's a, there's a lot of information on the application though, so it's one of those things that they're probably going to need to know this ahead of time.
Yeah.
Probably.
Once we know the date of the time and push the information out, just let them know they can start by picking up a printed copy if we wanted to provide that for them. That way, they could have information readily available by the time they come.
And then you got the tax stuff there. Y'all might pull up their tax stuff.
The tax record.
Yeah, and if Matt didn't come, or we could call one of our office personnel.
Yeah, could, and just walking through and making sure what we need, yeah, we could do that. Because we could, we could sit in here and use the mayor's office, and that way it's kind of private. People will have to feel like they're
Yep.
being covered, so.
I'd rather definitely take advantage of that program in your town. Review and approve the way for additional cam strength meters and systems for residential master meters.
Reached out to Fordline to ask them for a printout of everything that they have already installed and where we are in our process. Had not received that this afternoon, but some people may have been, but people that was emailing may have been on vacation still, so. What I did is went through the original quotes that we received and pulled in the quantities that were originally on that quote, and then what they have billed us for currently. So, there is still several items that need to be installed, but on the original quote, they did not have the specifications for those master meters. And I know that we talked about the possibility, but it's happened to change out. And Missy and I actually looked through the contract with Handy to make sure who owned those meters based on contract. And so, with the original quote, master meters were not on there. So, that is part of this section on page one that gives you the additional meters that are needed. And there are some, like the five eighths and the one, I'm sorry, one inch, the one and a half inch, the two inch, three inch, that were, we had those quoted, but once they got in the meter box themselves, knowing what it was that needed to be replaced. So, we were saying that we had sixteen hundred, but you don't know until you're in that meter box. So, that was what some of the difference was in the smaller meters. The additional materials is for installation of the master meters and also the additional meters that we need to finish out the system. And then the last page has the actual installation cost that G two is taking care of for us. And as of right now, they're still, they've still not billed for about a hundred thousand dollars, which is the difference in what this is.
Back up to again.
So, they have billed for everything except for about a hundred thousand dollars, which is about the difference in this. And what I asked them by email is, give me what's left in that original quote. And I haven't got that back from them yet, so I'll give that to you guys as soon as I get it to let you know what the difference is. Because everything that we quoted is not going to be needed now, since we need the different sized meters. And I don't think I have any write-out where down to in our pre-system.
Most of what we need, not counting, but it's good, is the major makers, like the businesses in the school.
Which are either two, three, and a four inch.
There's, there's probably, I'd say maybe ten to fifteen maybe residential. And that's because meter boxes broke on one of them. It's tore up. They got, stuff like that.
They did say that, you know, with the tariffs coming in, as it's described here, but they're concerned that costs are going to start to go up, so trying to get us locked in on a price is why they sent us out. I do understand if you guys want me to wait and see what the difference is in that quoted price and what we
Yeah, are you saying that possibly the quoted price and what we hadn't paid would cover this?
Possibly. That's what I'm asking for clarification from them.
And I guess they quoted us to what we told them. They didn't look at nothing?
Well, they looked at, and they went around and did spot checks on several. But when you've got the number of meters that we have in the ground, you're still going to have a large difference of meters. Most of them were probably Hershey, if I'm saying that correctly and looking at the pile, but when they, you know, get into the meter box, it differed. It was different than what we had assumed. Because we gave them a full list of all accounts and all locations.
Including master meters?
We did give them those, but we still did not know whether or not we were going to be able to move forward with that until we reviewed that contract.
Because you didn't know who, to whom the master meters belong, right?
And I did have a talk with Mr. Hannah, and they had no issues with us changing those out and just letting know that, you know, it would be much easier for us and them as well if they make that change over.
How many of these meters are all in use now? The two inch, three inch, and five inch, eight inch, what are you, master meters?
That's what Robin was just sharing with us. They, we still have less than twenty residential that are not online. And then we have, still have some businesses that need to be switched out, so that's.
That's what I'm saying. Are those businesses operational, active meters?
Well, one of them is from Century. One of them's of North Jones, it's listed as Aqua Sky.
Yeah.
They have it on. They don't use any water, but it's on. They pay a bill.
And there's actually two meters.
That's what I used to do the old council. Yeah, yeah, it's the best plan. Are there anybody in there, Rob, who knows if it's still in? They used to, I don't think they've worked on it in a while, but they pay a bill on it every time.
I just, it looked like it's grown up in there. I didn't know it's still, it'll come.
And Century has two meters. They're going to have a master meter.
Now, the front meter is still on, but that's just the regular one. But the back one, the two, but that one's turned off. Didn't we tell them last time they were here, we sure did book them to get our price locked in because of what was going on that we, didn't we?
Well, I thought we said we didn't, what we
Yeah, I thought we had that.
They did lock in all of our prices on the majority of everything that we have had installed. It's just these additional items that
Don't count it.
Yeah, and there's not a huge fluctuation in, from one price to other. And I'll send you this spreadsheet tomorrow just so you can see the difference. It's not a huge increase, but it can continue to go up the longer, but we don't have that price locked in.
They didn't tell them we thought they didn't do anything. Because we did, we did, yeah. It would be important to know that we do owe them a hundred thousand dollars, or if a hundred thousand dollars would cover this.
Right.
It's a hundred thousand dollar covers this.
There's still going to be some difference because
I know, but it's going to be ten thousand.
We've not been billed for the software yet.
It was thirty, forty thousand, wasn't it?
Yes. Looking down across the list. Software's fourteen thousand. Software's fourteen thousand.
And maintenance on the equator.
Um, length up and running, which is fifteen hundred, the AMI hosting is fifty-six hundred. So you're looking at ten, twenty, thirty, forty, yeah, just about fifty thousand. So we're looking at still probably an increase of about fifty thousand. But I'll, I'll give hard numbers for, for you guys on that. I was hoping that we would have a good meeting, but I said that holidays kind of found everybody out. And then you do have the option not to change out the master meters. And that's what we, we want to do, but just to stay down out there, that's the way.
Very much an option, huh?
I think it would be.
The Harris are most big as water usual.
Be an advantage to have them changed.
Aye.
Is anything in contract, is anything by hand you pay them for part of the meters?
We reviewed that, I don't think there's anything in there because it's not deemed a necessary maintenance.
So is it part of the cost of water?
Not part of the cost of manufacturing water.
So we're buying a hundred thousand dollars of the meters on a water system that we're not gonna die, not making a dime off of, would that be correct?
It's not, just their meters is not a hundred thousand dollars. And.
Okay, fifty. Okay, then, hey.
Whatever we're paying, we're paying for their meters on the system that we don't make any money.
That we don't make any money on. So we're going in the whole, whatever meters cost. The others we recruit some, the cost of water there.
Correct. And your only justification for doing it is that with the meters you have now, you lose more water that you don't get to recoup.
I understand that.
Right. So, I mean, the contract in and of itself.
Is an issue.
Tell me about it, yeah. I've lived with it. Mayor, when's your quarterly meeting?
I don't know.
Should be this month.
Should be, yeah.
September.
Why don't you tell them we're gonna charge them for cost of meters and the cost of water?
Shouldn't we?
It's cost of water, we can't deliver without meters.
Yep.
Um, well, we'll have to put a hold on the meters then because I think they'll have to have that as the, a budget benefit for themselves and vote on whether or not they wanna change out the meters that they already installed.
If it's the cost of water, we'll know what it is for next year.
Cause they, you know, they've been paying for meters and maintenance on those meters. And one of the meters is fairly new, if I'm stating that correctly, Michael. But, um, that, everybody that we have talked to has said, our system, it should be our meter. It's, it's like having someone else run your cash register, you know, where.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
Maintaining the meters. So it's the cost of us doing business, and I get.
Normally the cost of us doing business is to make profit, where this is not.
But that's something that the majority of us on board haven't had any dealings with on this contract.
Some might be hanging, cause it was changed.
In two thousand.
Few years ago.
Fifteen is the last time it was updated.
Somewhere near the, where we got kicking high gear once someone ever moved out of the day, got changed.
Two thousand fifteen. That was the last updated contract, if I'm stating that correctly.
I think that's correct. But if the board gives me direction that we need to attempt to do something about it, then we absolutely.
I think we need to attempt to, at least, part of the meters and not all the meters cost. If they're paying for them now, then be no difference than them paying for them for us, correct?
But then, if they pay for them, we're in the same situation.
It has to be that we own.
Yeah.
And, you know, that may be a negotiating point that if we're paying for these new meters and we're, I mean, if we're owning these new meters and they're paying for them, you know, paying for these new meters may continue to keep the contract in some semblance of form that it's currently in.
And also lets us operate the water plant better because we know exactly how much water's going through the system.
Well, I mean, it, it hurts them also if it is leaking and we're not able to spot it, yeah.
Cause that's been the problem through the years is the leaks and, and, uh, them not knowing.
Um, Mayor, I'm gonna talk to you about your board meeting, and then I'll talk to you about their attorney and we'll circle around and see what we can come up with.
It's their turn to host, correct? And we need to call Daryl and find out when our next meeting is, cause it's been at least three or four months, if not longer.
I mean, he would drive the cost of water, they would be paying about sixty percent. Which would be a tight fire.
Anything else on water meters? Not with moving on, discussion of services for codifying town ordinances, Angel.
Several meetings back, we've talked about our town ordinances and that they, um, are, a lot of them are outdated and we're not even sure if we have copies of all the updates that they provided throughout the years. And in looking at this with Attorney Whitten and also with our town clerk, Paula Hedrick, we feel like our benefit is to move forward looking at a service that actually does the complications of our ordinances. They've looked through the, what we have for legality or issues that have changed over the years, if anything's in conflict with the current law, um, internal inconsistencies or obsolete or outdated language that update all of that information as well. Um, if you've ever been to another town's website and you look for their ordinance codes, more than likely they use either American Legal or Civic Plus. Those are the two main companies that do this throughout the state of North Carolina. Paula reached out to, um, both Civic Plus and American Legal and, um, received information back on each company and what their services can provide. Without really knowing how many pages, I believe it is, I mean, pages our ordinance is, they can't give a true and accurate quote. So just to say that it's between nine and twelve thousand dollars um, is the best that they can do with not knowing fully what everything is. And it does come with an online renewal monthly, uh, annually of two to three thousand dollars. And what that is, is that anytime there is an, an update for an ordinance, we send them that update, just like what we were talking about with the alleyway closures. We send them the update, they go in, they place these updates in our ordinance online. They also, I believe it's once a year, give us a printed updated copy of everything. But, um, they put it in the right format where it falls in our ordinance. They also, um, cross-reference, they don't do away with old ordinance. They just show the replacement of that ordinance, so we have that history there for those that they go follow. Um, and looking at American Legal, we reached up to them several years ago. And their quote was basically about the same. I mean, they're saying they, they buy hundred to ten thousand. And they're roughly now saying it's about seventy-five thousand dollars more for their services. I don't know, Missy wants to elaborate on any of these services here, um, but.
One of the big concerns that I have is I've asked Angel to move forward and Paul getting quotes and prices on this. Is we have these conflicts, like when we switched over to one sixty D and we tried to update and it was redone and we did, and there's inconsistencies. As I've started trying to go through, it's gonna be ridiculously expensive for me to have to piece them all and go through. And so I knew it was included in part of this, and that's part of what they do, is their initial code review. They have staff code attorneys that do nothing but look at your code and look at North Carolina state law, go through, go through the two and say, you can't do this, this is, this is inconsistent. This violates state law or U.S. law, we have to go through and change this. And that part in itself is immensely beneficial. Um, and then other than that, again, it just keeps it current moving forward. Anytime there's an update, it's almost instant that it's updated on the website. So if you have someone that's new coming to town that wants to open a business, it's very easy for them to look and see exactly what the requirements are, exactly what has to be done. And there's no, well, she said this, or maybe this, or maybe that. It takes all those inconsistencies out of the picture and makes it easily accessible and updated immediately. And we're not scrambling and trying to find things, and it keeps the need for magic books or bibles to, you know, from being such a big deal, so it's all in one place. I know it's an expense, but I think it's very necessary as soon as we can possibly do it. Is this less expensive than you going through and doing it? Hmm, absolutely. Because it's gonna take more hours for me to sit there, because I don't have a dedicated staff person to do this.
Did any of our staff do this?
No, because they're not qualified to know what the state law and the U.S. law is and whether or not there's inconsistencies.
What's the format that they give it back to you is so professional that if you visit Thomasville or the Lakes, and I believe they both used, um, Civic Plus, it's called Menace Code. But you can cross-reference, so Harry wants to know how many chickens they can have. They just go to the site, bunch of chickens, and it'll bring up every ordinance that has to do with the chicken.
Thomas, you can look at Thomasville, it's very easy to use. Um, it's super user friendly, and I mean, I'm literally constantly, you'll find yourself referencing it constantly. I mean, I look at it, I'll put in streets, you know, how wide setbacks, all those things that pops up, pops up, pops up.
Who did Thomasville?
UniCode is the same.
I reached out to the list serve, which is the clerks, and they did state that, uh, UniCode was, uh, recommended one to use. I really can't tell you that I received any, I said they had American Legal.
Any of, either of these systems, you know, they bring it back to you guys with their findings and then it's you adopt the ordinances, the changes that are needed to be made. So if you'll have hands on it once it's done, you're able to review the changes that need to be made.
What if, um, if they were working on this and then sudden, before they were finished, or even say after they're finished, somebody finds something that we don't know right now exists? Is that, I mean, can that be just like added on the end today or?
Oh, yeah, it's part of, cause that annual figure, right? Anytime there's any changes, any issues, any new adoptions, whatever, you submit them, that.
But also the history.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, the historical. So if we find an ordinance that's old that we didn't realize that we had and have changed, yes, they can go in and know where they go.
Actually, they asked me for all of them upfront so that they could quote the price. And I told them, I said, we're not prepared to spark that at this moment, so.
But we're saying if any pop-up out of the woodwork somewhere, we don't know where we're at. We find a folder somewhere.
What kind of term you on, Tom?
Eighteen to twenty-four months.
For that one we got.
It's a, it's a big deal. It's a lot. I would anticipate yours being shorter. I would have guessed about eighteen months.
How many pages do we have?
My gosh.
Uh, I'd say. Going back through a little bit too, well.
I mean, a thousand or five thousand? Send a book, right, all in one book, correct?
What we currently have, yeah.
Yeah, what we currently have, but, you know, all the stuff that's been added. I mean, I would probably say less than a thousand, but, but there again, it's like we said, is that everything? And, you know, once they pull all that information together, they may say, hey, do you guys not have an ordinance on X, Y, Z? And then that helps us discover that's something else, but, I mean, I would say less than, I was guessing less than a thousand pages, but.
But that eighteen to twenty-four months is including for them going through, scanning it all in, reviewing it, doing the comparisons, coming back to us and saying, here's what we're missing, here's what you need, here's your conflicts, you guys correcting that, us resubmitting that to them. So they're saying eighteen to twenty-four months till we're fully up and compliant and going.
Honestly, there's probably a lot.
Yeah.
And just what we ran into recently, we ran into several.
But we redid them all at one time, so wouldn't it be starting there? Cause the old ones were done away with, I assume?
You just did, redid one sixty D, right?
Yep, we did them all within the last, well, ten years, didn't we? We did them all, we went through the whole.
Yeah, we had meetings between, uh, planning zoning boards here and.
That was your one sixty D, that was the zoning, not the town ordinances.
Well, he went through everything, that guy went through everything. He had a board up here and he went through everything.
That was only the one sixty D is all that was supposed to include.
Yeah, that's all it included.
We had.
Cause that was.
Yeah, just that we made a bunch with all of them, that was, was up great in all of our ordinances.
Yeah, so that was just our ordinances, our planning and zoning.
Yeah, planning and ordinance.
And that did take a long time.
Yeah.
But I think.
These are including that, it's, it's.
These are included in this, yes.
Because that is an ordinance, it's your zoning ordinance.
Yes.
And they, they can go through and catch, and if we would have had them, would have probably caught that.
We certainly would have.
As it was submitted, that there was an error. It could have possibly been called, so.
And you can look up.
Anything.
Like chickens.
You can put chickens, you can put.
Cause you can't have chicken unless you've got two and a half acres, so you can't have them on the ground if you're in a coop.
I just heard about that one today, yeah, no.
Cause the order says two and a half acres, that's like two acres.
Yeah, two acres.
Cause that running around my backyard, I guess is fair game.
That's what I'm thinking about on Daniel Street, I turned that into code.
Cause they, they did.
They said they could build, they had a coop and said it was good.
It's on our, um, face report that they, they're cooked and okay.
Really? I asked her about that today and she said chickens. I said, I, I promise you it's in here.
Oh, yeah, I got pictures of them in my backyard, yeah, the free range, so I guess.
We did see them on the random.
Do we know where those came? The price of eggs went through the move, everybody wanted chickens. And I think that chickens have increased in town too, because trade, uh, charge supplies here and they have made leaps and they're so cute.
Our neighborhood doesn't allow them, but I've got six or seven that keep running through my front yard and see if they can bring it to you, so.
Yeah.
There's some bodies.
Your, your traffic, uh, plate where you can catch them.
It will catch the little chicken babies.
I mean, honestly, everywhere I was at Rigs not long ago, and there was one on the egg box, it just flew it and they're in my backyard.
You know, we had those.
I was gonna break Rigs.
So with, with this, um, consideration, I would, my recommendation that staff and I believe Missy and, and Paula would say the same thing is to get, move forward with the Civic Plus, which is Menace Code. Uh, we can definitely let you guys do research and look at those other town sites and I'll send you examples, but I know Thomasville is one. And City to get to, you can definitely look at that and we can bring this back to the table at next semester if you would prefer.
I know it's a lot, but I'm, from what I'm hearing, I think that we do need it.
Yeah, it, it could have saved us that already.
It could have saved us, already, we've had a place, so.
If, part of it's gonna have to be done, and you're gonna pay an individual more than you're gonna pay this and come out with less.
We paid P T R C six thousand dollars to do our planning and zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm ready to make a motion to go ahead and do it.
I second that.
Further discussion, yeah? Not all in favor, say aye.
Multi, multi, yeah, Civic.
Munich, where is it?
Munich, Civic Plus.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration of approval resolution R twenty-five, twenty-six oh four, surplus property water treatment plant.
So this is our just general resolution for declaring surplus. Water plant has, um, one turbometer that's. one turbometer that's been taken out of service. The other ones are just items that have been replaced over the years. Three units, I'm sorry, there's two turbometers. Um, four units that are, um, HAWK analyzers and then three of the HAWK, um, valve, I don't know what it is, fifty-three hundred, it's, I'll just sit right there, I don't know what that is. But, is, but they're not in service, we've replaced them over the years and they're doing cleanup and there are things that we can put out there. Uh, so they could use them for parts, to rebuild something that they have, but we'll list them through the deals and sell them that way.
Mr. Mayor, I'm able to circulate this property, property and resolution.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion carries. Consideration of approval of town policies, surveillance, surveillance, information policy. That date to the town has been personnel policy procedure manual, section six point two, employment reference request policy. All this is from annual meetings.
Um, the first one we'll look at is our surveillance information policy. We installed the new cameras here at town hall, the farmer's market area and also Harrison Park. Um, speaking with Chief James, we did not have a policy that states the purpose of these cameras and they are for surveillance. In looking at other towns and what the policies are, um, this is really how this policy came about. We, um, drafted it, reviewed it, sent it to Mississippi for review and then also sent it to District Attorney, Mr. Frank and let him, um, review that as well. The only thing that, um, he came back with was one recommendation stating that we would mark all areas saying that people are entering an area that is being, that's under surveillance. So that they have the option to not enter that area if necessary. It does list our properties, it talks about who's in charge, like who has access to the information, when information is released to other agencies, for whatever reason, through the police department, how that's handled. Um, we have to keep up with tracking of that information as well. Um, the only other thing is, um, I think we might should put under town locations, um, we might indicate like future locations because otherwise we have to keep coming back and changing the policy, like future town departments, um, not sure if you wanna do that, but that would be a consideration. It also lists what our retention and this destruction policy is and that basically, um, how it's handled through system, not only that, but with the town clerk, being keeper of the records for the town will be also the keeper of the records for this. Chief James and the police department have full access as to criminal investigations, being able to view information when necessary and not have to access that through the town clerk, um, to keep the privacy of what's going on with that investigation.
Well, and we put in here the physical placement of the devices, it's on purpose built town structures or by co-locational existing town structure. And then it says, um, for the second one, including but not limited to.
I see that name.
Yeah, so I think we're there.
Any questions, concerns, comments that you guys have about the policy?
Is it public record or thing that we're taking on the table?
No. What we found out is that the cause will use it for surveillance, it's not, like some towns have cameras that you can pull up and watch town feed. Those are public cameras, but the cause will use it for criminal, protection of criminal acts. It's like, it doesn't make it public. Any other questions? Um, if there are no other questions, we can go on approving this policy and then we'll review the next policy.
I would make a motion to approve a surveillance information policy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion does carry.
The second policy is in regards to how we handle requests for employment reference, um, employment reference request. So in our employee manual, under article one, organization, human resource system, section six should be updated now to say section six one, employee information open in public record. And then, um, section six to employment reference request. And this just basically outlines what we do as a department head when we get a request for a reference. It is always best if it's run through your HR department, which is our town clerk. Uh, but in the cases where they want, like in a police department, sometimes they will, they have more questions that are more job detail. This outlines what we can do in order to provide that information. There are, um, there are state laws that govern what we can and cannot say during a job reference and that is also listed here under, um, four B. And it just protects us as an agency, if we all have the same, if we follow the same policy guidelines and how that information's handled. We know going forward that there's not any wrong information being passed out. Have any questions about this policy?
So this is saying we can say, um, what the performance was?
Which section?
Why they're there?
Which section are you looking at?
I'm sorry, I'm on, um, four B, telling me information disclosed.
So this comes straight from the general statute and it does say that it prevents the disclosure of job-related information in good faith, including dates of employment, job title and duties, their final salary and wages, and the information about the employee's job performance, reasons for separation, provided in the information. The information is factual, job-related and shared in good faith.
Okay. So it can be subjective?
It can be subjective.
It can be.
Right, and so sometimes it's best to just stop after final salary because what, my thoughts and, uh, and words are on someone's job performance will be different than what yours are. It can be taken in different contexts all the way around, depending on who it's, who it is and who shares the information.
The flip side of that is it was saying that's a lot harder in the past, if there's a level with just what was going on.
This is true, this is true. So if we have a policy, I think it helps us to be able to establish the ground, like the ground level of what we will share. You know, in the past, I think anybody who's ever called in, it's shared, yes, they worked here, how long they were with us and minimal information, because, you know, in all reality, we don't wanna share information that could set you up for lawsuit. Any other, any concerns or questions that you guys have about the rest of that policy? And this just, that's our employee manual.
I'll move to that.
Sorry.
Hey Travis, call the fire marshal room.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Town Department reports, starting with Police Chief Mike James.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Professor. I haven't seen that document, but I probably need to say that a new North Carolina administrative code, I have to share if a release form is signed, the entire file of anybody that applies for a law enforcement decision. I now have to go to every agency where anyone applies here and inspect their entire file. So I hadn't seen that and that might be, I just wanna make sure that wasn't in conflict. Uh, which, it's a good thing, it's like what you said, we find things that otherwise we may not have found and people admired throughout the state did not look at files and then down the road they wish they had. We are now, uh, participating live in Nibers, it was six months or so in the test phase and now we're doing those stats, uh, live, I entered the stats for August today. And I think the manager maybe has shared with, uh, all of you what the crime stats are. Keep in mind that only part of twenty twenty-three is there, uh, maybe first twenty twenty-three forward. So I think that'll be valuable as we go forward, looking at crime data, uh, determining manpower needs. Uh, the manager and I have conducted, uh, I wanna say seven, interviewed seven people for captain slash sergeant positions. Most of those people are interested in the captain position. Uh, I think she and I have agreed of the top candidates and we look to do a outside assessment to select the captain and maybe down the road, once that captain's in place, we decide what we do about the sergeant position. Area insurance has agreed to pay eighteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents for the total loss of the police vehicle. We have, uh, had all the equipment stripped and that vehicle now has been towed, uh, to a, to a junkyard somewhere around Conacord, I think. Since I did this document, we now have car two back in service. It stayed at M and L for about three weeks, but it's back in service now. I'm working on purchasing the new weapons that you approved in, uh, this budget. Uh, I do anticipate trading in our current lock pistols, uh, since they're an F F L dealer. Tagging that, uh, pistol with the officer's name that had it and they would have the option to go purchase that weapon if they wanted to buy their own weapon down the road as well. I plan to trade in some weapons that were seized, uh, that the judge assigned an order, turning those over to Denton P D, which should reduce the cost of those weapons and help provide ammunition. Uh, as I suspected, the Governor's Crime Commission did not award us the grant for lock cameras. Uh, the tier one counties got priorities, so we did not get it. I don't agree with the Director of Governor's Crime Commission, the way they made that ruling because Denton might be in a tier uh, two county, but Denton doesn't have the money that Davidson County has. So I think they painted us with a wide brush and that's not fair, but maybe down the road that will change, hopefully, where we can be considered. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Good report, thank you.
Yeah, well, your progression, I'm gonna leave, we got a couple of things going on and, uh, I'll stay.
Fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah, are you gonna do that? Any good?
I can redo it. So they have a total call for August twenty-three, um, fire alarms, seven, shirts for fires, four, public service, uh, D M S two, traffic accidents, four, and outside fires, one. They've completed their hose testing, continued to, um, maintenance on hydrants, completed the firework training through Davidson County Fire Marshal's Office and then, um, completed the F F series route up. And then, um, rescue thirty-nine has been repaired.
Thanks, thank you. Both of yours, my fine.
Well, we fixed water leaks, finished some oil leaks. There's some oil leaks, about two a day, I don't even, we got two, we have. Re-seated, we've bought the yards back and we fixed water leaks. Uh, we kinda catch up on the mowing, especially on outfall lines and, uh, pump stations and water tanks. All that stuff and regular work.
All the ditches you cleaned out, you gonna put anything in there or you gonna leave them up there or?
We gotta go back in the southern.
Okay.
We, we just ain't had time to go back. But we, we haven't been cleaning, that ain't gonna hurt, but we've been cleaning out a lot of ditches. Still, I ain't figured out what I'm gonna do to these tile people, but open ditches, we've been cleaning a lot in. And that's it, our usual work.
That's mine.
Jason?
Are you gonna do this?
Uh, toxicity sampling's done, metal sampling's done. The, we had to work on the rawware valve for the mercury meter. It's been flushed and it's back to reading pretty accurate, replaced all the valves and the piping on it. Pemot chlorometer, so they service, service the chlorine feed system. Uh, yearly calibration steady for low level chlorine and pH. That's more of his additional testing. Uh, they've been trying to get the plant organized and cleaning, I think Jason has actually got them doing the, uh, work order system now where he can assign tasks to the employees down there, they gotta sign off on them. Uh, he bought some lockers when they put their stuff in. I had Sanford Electric come down and do a lot of electrical work to get rid of some embanked drop cords that stretched their work across that place. We put in some receptacles and some switches and some exterior lighting on the basins where you can actually see where you're walking in. And?
He said the rest of it's usual, you don't have to.
Okay, and, and y'all got a copy of this, right? Y'all gonna read those?
Jason, um, was filling out his documents, so he had to go up and copy it, but he did come by. He is meeting with a new company though, um, Monday regarding our, um, calibration on our meters at the plant.
That one he got whipped it, do I? They couldn't, couldn't do our brain.
Yeah, so, um, we'll have more information on that, maybe potentially switching from the company that we're from. The rest of it is just the regular stuff that he continues to work on.
So the, where is this new flooring, that's still, that's like a wish list item?
Well, his goals, I think he's gonna sign half these to meet.
New flooring is in the chemical feed room where it's that big picture.
Is that the chemical feed room or is that the part I had quoted for the office and all?
Oh, it is for the office, my apologies. Um, their tile there is like the tile we have here and the top surface is gone, so it just looks dingy and dirty even though it's been mopped. Um, and so it, it'll take being replaced to have it in a nice look for the, the area.
Right there, that one there, I may have to meet with our meter people, uh, to see about having a flow meter installed at the wading discharge.
And that's per state inspection.
Yep, yep, the state inspector asked for that. And the cost is leaking in the basement wall, it ain't leaking in the wall, it's leaking in the pipe. Uh, this ain't, that ain't too bad, at least. Your long-term, now, that's gonna cost you money, but the, the issues and goals, that, that's not bad. And the usual work, which now Handy is hand. I'd hate to say how many leaks Handy's had, big leaks.
At least six over the past few days that they've found and fixed.
Yeah, they, they crashed the water tanks several times now and they, they just stayed. They usually up here, they then down here. And we've been trying to get them filled up. They're running twenty-four seven down there, but the way Handy's got their fill systems on, it's taken days to fill up a water tank. Which I addressed that with the Handy's staff and hopefully they're gonna correct that.
I've reached out to Mr. Handel as well.
And that's it for the water plant.
Waste Water Creek Plant, throw it in.
We did have a pump that fell at the North Main Street Pump Station during the first week of August. Um, we bought a new rotating assembly and that did not work. Me and Mike have racked our brains on this, uh, we called the Gorman Rupp pump people and because the pump is twenty-one years old, they recommend that we buy a new pump. And the manager has authorized that, so I made that purchase today. Seven-day turnaround, so hopefully next week, good, that will be rectified. David Nicholson was in maintenance technologist certification school during the week of the fourth. He sits for exam tomorrow morning. Uh, we flushed nine hydrants during the week of the eleventh and collected our quarterly tri-halomethanes and halo acidic acids and on Thursday the fourteenth, and I have not received the results yet as of today. We did have a land application, a bio solids event on the August twenty-eighth and we did have an inspection from the state and everything went great. And we did have an inspection from the state and everything went great with that. We did submit our NPDS permit renewal application to the state on the twenty-fifth. It's been taking approximately fourteen months to receive the, a new permit from the state. And my regular work.
Any questions?
Troy, what, did we get an NOB on the top there or what letter we got in mail?
Uh, we've gotten an NOB on the water side for a we had a, in our lead and copper, one of the homes tested a protect on lead. So I had to do a public notice for that. It's been handled.
One that we mailed out recently was for them.
Oh, yes, that was, I missed, uh, I missed, I missed a, collecting a bacteriological in med. And we had to send out a public notice for that. That was to the state or that was to everyone.
It was just missed by date?
Yeah, it was just, I missed it by the day.
Everything got cleared?
Yep. We sampled an extra sample the following month just to make sure that everything's great.
Any questions? No, thank you. Good job. Administration, I'll be.
Total customers billed was one thousand sixty-eight. That includes paper and email bills for the August usage. Gallons was four million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and five. Also for August usage, which billed out one hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, twenty-two cents. Total gallons billed for final accounts was seventy-four hundred and three gallons. That billed out for four hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Unbilled gallons, which are our town owned properties, is a million. Little over a million gallons for that. Handy water gallons for the August usage was thirty-eight million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred. Billed out at sixty-nine thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-one cent. We did have a correction on the July billing. It actually was initially posted as thirty-two million, one hundred and seventy-eight four. And it ended up being thirty-five million, five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred, billing now at sixty-four, two hundred dollars and eighty-three cent. The reason for the difference was at the time the reading was taken. There was water in the area and they could not get a good read and he wrote down what he thought he had solved it. And once it dried out, he could tell what was actually correct on that. And Handy also reached out for us to review that as well because their reading was different from ours. There was a request for gallons prior year versus current year. And so we ran this on the July to June cycle. If you would prefer to see it January to December, we can certainly go back and provide that. The top report in the lighter color is Handy's gallons. And then in the green report shows you residential on the left side, business on the right side. And that gives you your gallons and I did include underneath the heading here what each of those stood for. We just have those coded in our system. Hopefully this will be helpful in kind of seeing the usage as we build upon it this year.
What does final mean?
Uh, those are accounts that have closed. Residential accounts that have closed and/or business. Okay, I guess there's no other questions on that.
I got a question. What, what is the mean gallons on town owned property?
Water plant, sewer plant, sewer for the town.
Okay, just used for. So it includes your water plant?
No, that's the sewer plant. That's just the sewer plant.
It's twenty-five percent of what we use for town?
Are, is it on the, the non-billed?
Yeah, non-billed town owned property.
That's sewer plant.
Seem like a lot, I understand.
It is a lot.
It is. That's what we use to disinfect the treated wastewater.
We only billed four point three million and a million of that we used. Is that correct?
That's not listed in what we bill.
Okay.
That's not included.
So it's actually five points, whatever. It does seem like a lot. And, and.
Just the groundwater.
No?
Just the groundwater.
Yeah, it's going to. At, just at sewer plant, not yet on the water plant, correct?
We don't have any water at the water.
Yeah.
What do we do?
Well, well, there's not one for the.
Yeah, we track it at the water plant, but they don't track it to town hall. We have finish water and wastewater and how much water we draw all in every day, you know, we have.
Should I get that read?
Yes, I understand.
So is the million gallons.
I guess. I just seem like a lot, I understand. I'm saying it wrong, you saying it, seem like a lot. And you know how much, since we've gone through two months with the new meters, of course, I know they're not completed, what the difference is?
I don't have those figures in front of me.
Last month and this month has been about ten, fifteen thousand more, money wise.
Money wise, which they got signed percentage wise, I guess. Okay.
So we billed, billed what, ten thousand dollars more or? And because we sell handy, it costs, that's why their thirty-eight million costs only sixty-nine thousand, whereas our four million costs a hundred and eleven thousand. Is that right?
Field.
Yeah, fields.
Anything else on that? Okay, it was mentioned about the shrubs blocking the view at the Fuel Smart and I did speak to their manager. And she has decided to cut those off at the ground. She said she would have those done at the end of last week. I haven't been back through that intersection, so I'm not sure if that's been completed or not, but she did state that she would work on that. I'd also placed several work orders in for Public Works to do the mowing, weeding and so forth. And Michael's already spoke on that, but I would like to thank that department for addressing those and getting those taken care of so quickly. And also plus some to fly out for the holiday weekend. Um, I also have rode around town and tried to pick up on most all of the locations. I'm sure I may have missed some. Where shrubs or tree limbs are obstructing the view at intersections. So notification has been sent out to those property owners. And I've got some who reached back out to me and stated that they would take care of this. There's still some locations that Ace had noted as being abated by the town that needs mowing and addressing those. I had received one quote, our normal mower had gone up in price, so I was trying another gentleman. Which took three weeks to tell me that he wasn't going to be able to do it. So I do have someone taking care of that this week, so we'll get that back in line. And I wasn't here the week of August, the eighteenth through the twenty-first, and I was at Florida's conference, which I'll eventually mention that too. So that's all I have to report at this time.
Was, was part of the ones, the Denton Road, those two houses that's really on the ground, is that the one that's still got?
That's Sonicar, yes.
Maybe with that road that's still over, not in the Denton.
What about, if you're handling code, what about, what were you talking about the buildings being over or whatever? What's the on that?
I'm sorry, ask me that again.
On buildings, didn't you say that they've been out checking things, didn't have, what, permitted?
Storage. So, um, there are a lot of accessory buildings that have been placed in all over town. Accessory building does not require a building permit, but it does require a zoning permit. You have to know what your setback requirements are. Um, we had a situation where a house at the end of Broad Street, building was placed up next to the house. Building caught fire, burned the side of the house. If they had gone through the proper zoning, that may not have, it may have just marked the building, not their house. So Code is addressing those, going, if they've seen them, people are just getting letters. Um, one of the issues is, is that the people selling the accessory buildings have shared with the people purchasing them, they don't have to have a zoning permit. It's not that they, they don't have to have a building permit, but you have to have a zoning permit. Fences, buildings, you know, things that you do on your property, you need to make sure that you're within proper zone. You're not encroaching on your neighbors, you're not on the back side of your property too close and things like that. We've addressed it. We've reached out to the local building supply companies to let them know that they did have to send them here first.
But you're not, are we writing a looking for lease?
If, if they're noticed by Code, she is looking for them.
Are we going back one year, twenty years? I mean, I don't see how we can go back twenty years if it's been that.
No, and there's a statute that doesn't allow you to go back that far. Most of them have been placed within the last two years. But if they're too close, if they're too close to the house, that's what is going red light. And the unfortunate part is that some that I've been out and inspected myself, they have nowhere else to put this building. Because their land drops steep to the left, steep to the right, and there's no backyard. So.
I guess they can make for a variance.
Right. And that's, you know, that's the unfortunate part with some of the houses that are in the Broad and Spring Streets. If they don't have good staple land that can put a building on it. But they, um, the few that I've worked with, they've moved them. One lady just needed to move hers back and out about three foot and she was in compliance. And I think that the company worked with her and they moved it for her because they had instructed that she didn't have to have it moved. There was another house, building on see, East Salisbury Street. That accessory building was actually in the front yard, which is not allowed. Has to be side or rear with that one, or South Jones the same way. Um, but the one on Salisbury wasn't even on their property. They were on the neighbor's property fully, so they've now moved theirs too.
South Jones came in and stated that he had requested his to be picked up. I don't have the reasoning to find that, but.
Where are we at with?
We'll talk about that.
Okay, I didn't know if that was now or later.
If I can, when Missy takes up. I did want to mention something that Paula skipped over. But she did attend the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks. And she is now a North Carolina certified municipal clerk. So I want to extend, um, to you guys, it is a lot of work. I've been there. Super proud of you to take that initiative to do what needs to be done so that you can help us get through what has to be done. But, but I am super proud of you for doing that. It is, it is a great accomplishment through the school government.
Town attorney epic.
So all of my updates I think are going to be held for process. That's why we update you guys when we go through the justice.
Town manager's report.
Couple of things that you guys have just for updates. The project Santa wanted to thank us and I talked to Keith Varner this afternoon. He wanted to express to you guys that he really does appreciate the work that's done through the harvest pattern and what all they did this year. They funded eighteen hundred and sixty dollars and then can do was also provided for their program. So he does really appreciate that. So things are just, I've repeated the things that we looked at over the past few weeks through updates. But as Chief James stated, we have been handling interviews over the past couple of weeks for captain and sergeant. Some really good potential in those that we've interviewed. So I think he's looking forward to moving on to the next step and having someone fill that position. I don't know anything to point out. Is there anything you guys are looking up for updates? There's just so much information here. I did meet with Mr. Summy to review his rezoning request. It was tabled by the planning and zoning board. We did have several residents that were here that evening to kind of voice their concerns for the rezoning on that property. And met with Mr. Summy to look at what he potentially put on this property. It is just one part of the property that's being rezoned. So the main portion of the property is our Ace and he doesn't have to have anything rezoned. And by our permitted use table would allow him to put duplexes there without having to come before the board for that approval. It does, as we know, trigger your subdivision ordinance, which would have to be approved through the board. But, you know, we were, information was not shared out to them. He did not have a plat map, a plan and design for this property. Because he was just looking at the rezoning for that. The other property that came before us is Varner Street is the backside of the house beside of First Bank. They separated the property so that we're gonna sell the house for what is there to be developed. It is currently highway business as it used to be, one parcel. So the separation of that did not automatically put it into our Ace. Planning and zoning board, again, calls the neighbors that petitioned and came out to share their concerns. They asked for it to be tabled as well so they could get more information. Spoke with Mr. Brandon Schuler, who's doing that project today. And he's gonna get more information to us as to what their plans are for that property.
We have a package we give to these people when they come in.
I do, but with the rezoning, the planning and zoning board, they don't approve a plat change. They don't approve building. It falls to your zoning officer, which is me. So had we, if it had been that Mr. Summy had already decided to come out with four duplexes on the property and had his plan, then we could have brought that before them as a package. You do your rezoning, then you have that plat to review.
Mr. Summy did contact me as well. And he said, the reason I didn't have any more information is because I really just wanted to see if it could be rezoned. And then I would decide exactly what I'm doing. And so he said he was gonna try to gather some additional information to talk to them and try to give them more information, help them make a better decision about the rezoning.
On, on rezoning request years ago, well, I guess now too, if you rezon it, it's not conditional use. So once it's rezoned, they do what they want to.
As long as it's in that new zoning, yeah.
Yeah. So he can bring any plan he wants to and say, I'm gonna bring.
But it's not binding.
Right, okay, that's what I thought.
Correct, which is why people don't bring.
Can the board even ask?
You may ask, yes, but, you know, you may ask and the board may use that as a factor in deciding whether or not they want to grant the rezoning. But again, just because someone tells you that doesn't mean that they're bound to do it.
Right, that's what I want to make sure of.
And once it's rezoned, if he turns on and sells it to somebody.
Just they're done forever.
Yeah, definitely. So any questions that you guys have?
Bar screening.
Our Ace. We, Missy and I have got to finalize that contract. I think you just sent me this afternoon the wording that we needed to change on the contract with. on the contract with the bar screen.
Yes.
For that one, so I'll get that sent back over to you.
I'm sorry, I thought you said Morris Green.
Bar screen, bar screen.
So there was, there was some wording in the contract that needed to be changed and addressed, so we're, we'll send that, and it should be filed, so.
I just want to keep that on this on the contractor, and that's why I want to keep it that way.
Sounds good to me.
Will we see that bar screen this year? No, we ain't gonna see it, never, never, never gonna see it.
Maybe it's coming in on the paving truck.
Chris is running around.
Yes, they don't, normally, when they bid a project, they have a bid bond there. He says, here's the bid bond, here's the project.
Typically, yes.
This company did not.
Apparently not, I don't think so.
I mean, that was the question a month ago, was the bid bond.
What we were waiting on was the full, entire contract.
Well, they said the big bond, um, in minutes.
What we're gonna do, so we, we have everything. Now, I'll verify, but yes, normally with the submission of a bid, you're required to have your bond information provided.
Right, or your, it is no good, throw it out right then.
Correct, okay, it's not a complete bid package.
It also has to be stated in your bid pack that that's the way you require it, and I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, with Lillella, I would think not, probably. If anything goes wrong, it's their fault. Whoa, we spent several months just waiting for it to come. Several months? Troy, how long you been without a bar screen? Just on giggles.
Uh, thirty months.
Okay. Oh. Not long at all, and that's fine, thank you. Fire somebody, I should have fired her twelve months ago, longer. That is ridiculous. I hate to get on the high horse, but that is ridiculous, that he'd been waiting thirty months for a bar screen, we've had the money all along. Unacceptable.
You have shared this, and we have shared this with Lillella, and she cannot control the processes any more than I can.
I don't believe her.
Well.
I don't believe it takes thirty minutes, thirty months.
I understand.
I do not.
I understand, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Morris, I do, but we have been through this process, and unfortunately, it's not the same world that we had pre-COVID, and DEQ is still working from home, and it is still a process. I mean, we received a notification today, it was sent out Saturday, and needed required, required response by the first. And so we called today, oh, no, you shouldn't have received it, I'm sorry. No, it's not, I mean, it's not acceptable either, but that's, that's what we deal with back and forth, and we're not the only ones. It's across the whole state. Everybody got money, everybody's trying to spend money, and they are short-staffed. Person that Troy and I spoke to today, what she's saying, she's been there four months.
We don't have to get pulled.
I, I'm not, honestly, but I do know, and it is very frustrating. I would, when that, when he gets that bar screen, then we're having a party down there. Everybody's going to the sewer plant, so.
I mean, it's a good thing it wasn't one of the main pumps that we treat water down, because I guess we'd be just blowing crap down the creek.
And the unfortunate part is, is that everything has lead time. The pump we just bought today is four-week lead time. I mean, and that's with our fingers crossed.
What about Summy?
Summy, I talked to Bobby Kibbit on Friday, and they sent back an updated information with a price tag on it, and I sent back to them and asked them to please clarify what they meant, so I'm waiting on that. But Bobby called me back, Matt did not, and, um, but it is to do the connection to the ten-inch waterline. Um, their original quote is what they were updating. I said, I really need more details, because this isn't telling us anything. Michael and I went through it, sent them the connections that should be made, and where the, um, residential connections need to be done to, so. They didn't have it for me.
Andrew, I have a, a request.
Okay.
With, with your report, um, it looks like you've gone through and just kind of like your weekly updates that you've been putting in, and that's, that's all fine and good, but if you could put dates with stuff, like for example, one of the ones, the master gardeners, um, um, uh, senses today at the Dezen County Agricultural Park. If you could just put a date, you know, so that we know if it was August thirteenth, or if it all really happened today. Thank you.
And did you talk to Wooton about the hydro today, that they push it to the front?
They are trying to work on that. Um, they're in the process of mapping out the water lines now, um, so I told them that was their top priority on the hydraulics.
Because we're gonna make a motion then, kind of, just to put it out.
Um, what was that?
Something, what you make a motion on, I think.
Early on.
Oh, yes.
In a minute.
Mm-hmm.
About the, 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 yes. Sidex Center, African American Legion hood.
I'm just telling, look what's happening forty years.
I'm making a motion that the A A would be happy for the same price as the other nonprofit, like the A A, where it does it.
Um, one of the colorations, the A A does a split cost map, and the.
Free.
I was gonna say, they do pay a little bit of, um, money, monthly, so.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Any votes? That motion carries. Okay. Commissioner comments and concerns, any updates? No, we're going to a closed session.
Gentlemen.
Make a motion for what?
For a closed session.
Okay. There's second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
We're now in closed session.
I was trying to quiet, because I didn't know if we were ready for that.